Educators and administrators, welcome to our board meeting. I just have a few comments before we get into our moment of silence and our pledge. I just wanted to thank the Pablos Zero Athletic Club. They did an awesome job in golf tournament and I think they were supporting our student athletes across different athletic areas and we really appreciate that. Also understand there's a fundraiser for Greg Walker, to support him and being a number one Zebra fan. I think his class is coordinating that too. If you would decline, please share the information and support if you will. Let's see, well, so I'm not a regular, but there is key devices, so please take care of yourself and stay hydrated if you will. And as usual, I just thank God for the opportunity to serve this class and thank God for the opportunity to serve my colleagues. As a graduate of Pablos High School in class of nineteen ninety, enough said, it is truly an honor to do this, honor to work with good people and also to work with the racist attendants who's taking our school district forward. All right, by my account, we have a board, the only directors, Mr. Rick Evans and Director Whitmore. At this time, we're gonna stand for a moment of silence and prayer this time, for our local state, national leaders, for our parents and teachers, simply and eventually, simply because they're really on the front line to support after the homing, especially when there is unrest in our community and the state and of course, unfortunately, in this environment around the world. So we really wanna kind of a moment of silence and prayer for them, our first responders, and those who are still working with our members in our community, was supporting those at least the left out. So after that moment of silence, we have our pledge and then we're going to go into special recognition. So at this time, let's stand for a moment of silence and prayer. Thank you. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, Superintendent Barbour, special recognitions.
Isn't it exciting? We have several people in the audience tonight who are showing their Striker's Awards. And Mr. Carlisle, you want to help us? Can we start with, can we start with our teachers?
Sure.
Tonight, we'll start with our teachers. And so what was really exciting, based on different legislation that's happened throughout the state of Arkansas, teachers in Arkansas can earn merit pay, merit pay that's paid through the Department of Education. And we were fortunate to have seven teachers this year earn merit pay based on qualifications from the Department of Ed, and we'd like to recognize our teachers tonight.
And proud principals, if you want to stand with them, feel free to do so. First teacher, we have Crystal Swinney. Next, we have Shianta Evans. Next, we have Kendria Jones.
She got it done.
Jones on vacation. She is a teacher, this is her time, huh?
Tammy Russell.
On vacation.
Linda Footz. Kim Nixon. So Wanda Seer Mary.
I don't know if y'all noticed, not that we're counting anybody out, but this is our third recognition for you, so we're very proud. And she actually earned merit pay last year as well, so two years in a row. And so Pablos School District earned over nineteen thousand dollars this year in merit pay with our teachers, so congratulations.
Can you guys tighten up a little bit? Miss Cairns, Miss Cairns, come down here. Thank you.
And next, we have our student recognition. Oh.
Yeah.
Well, okay. Well, this year, we've had the honor and the privilege of opening several school banks in our district to advance our financial literacy initiative. So one of our schools, we have a bank that's named Matthews Elementary School. Let proud principal wave her hand. Another bank we have is at Forest Park Greenfield, it's our Kinder Center. We recognize students who took their first step in opening up a savings account, so they're just diving straight into some of those financial literacy practices. And what better practice to learn than to save money? So these students at a young age on bank day, they're taking their money to the school and they're depositing it, and the students who are, the students at the school are actual bank tellers, so they're learning some of those skills about possibly being employed one day at a bank. So they're learning some of those soft skills about, I mean, customer service, writing out deposit slips and counting money. So we just wanna recognize those students and applaud them for opening up their accounts and supporting our school banks. So first student we have is, you want to do that?
Ms. Kova Williams. Zariah Allen. Can you stand up here? Can we get everybody?
Let's move it back, we don't wanna cover your pretty face.
Ainsley Allen. Ainsley? Travis Martin Jr. You are welcome. Thank you for saving for your future. Marquise Bell. Congratulations. Zanaya Higgins. Bryson Cross. Zoriah Higgins. Hunter Wright. Zion Brazil.
Who saved the most money, raise your hand.
For all of our students, let's get our students' hands up.
Okay, I think I got it before it happened.
You're welcome. And now, this certainly couldn't be possible without the support and help from our bank that is with us as well, so we'd like to sign also recognizing Natasha Randall from FPT Bank of Arkansas. Don't worry about this, Randall, we'll all take pictures of everybody. All right, don't go anywhere, we've got one more picture, because we gotta do this. It may not stay, Travis, we'll have to get you. All right. There you go.
All right. Everybody ready? Me? All right.
Thank you, thank you. At this time, we have the parents or people that need to step out, or some children do that, now that we get into our very robust agenda this evening. And thank you all so much for attending. All right, thank you. After we move on, we just wanna recognize the Director Whitmore, Ms. President, good seeing you. All right, moving on, we're gonna move to our approval of minutes for our regular board meetings, dated May twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. The meeting minutes were in our board packet, Superintendent Barbour shared with us. If there are no questions, comments, concerns, or edits, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the regular board meeting dated May twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. We're moving to the private section, ready for question? Any questions, comments, concerns? Hear none, all in favor say aye. Aye for me, all opposed say no. Aye said, thank you very, very much. All right, now moving on to our financial report. Superintendent Barbour.
On item seven in your board packet, you know, there's the link, so when you look at the local revenue collection and breakdown, what you'll see is the month end report for May, and that we collected, up until the end of May, we collected twenty-four million nine hundred fifty-two thousand five hundred twenty-eight. We were still less, one point nine million, and what we had budgeted as tax revenue. I will say, since then, and you'll see it in your June report, we did get our June taxes in, however, it's not the complete amount of that one point nine. So I wanna take a few moments and explain something that we discovered just in the last couple of weeks. So it's, I'll speak as plainly as I can, so as far as the way school districts are funded, our local tax dollars, we receive them from January to December. However, the school budget is always focused, the school finances are always from July to June, you guys realize that? So we're closing out the fiscal year this June, and we'll start the new fiscal year in July. But the way that local tax revenue is reported to the State Department is by calendar year. So again, it's January of twenty twenty-four to December of twenty twenty-four. And we passed a millage on, in August of twenty twenty-three, so before August of twenty-three, we had a lower millage rate. After we passed that in August, in the calendar year of twenty twenty-four, we should be receiving tax dollars based on a forty-seven mills, our forty-seven point seven mills, which we were. We were the tax collectors, they were collecting our tax dollars based on those mills. However, when they reported that to the State Department, because the Department of Education takes in those local tax dollars and spreads it back out because of the Lakeview case, that's that equity case. So we received an email from the state saying that we were actually owing the state money because we had over-collected. The state says that you can only collect ninety-eight percent collection rate, and it was reported that we were collecting, Pablos School District was collecting a hundred and five percent, and we knew that wasn't right, because we'd been keeping up with our tax dollars and we still hadn't received all the tax money in yet. And so after the figuring, we realized we had collected at ninety-three percent of our forty-seven mills. And so when we started digging, we realized that the information that was reported to the State Department was reported based on our own old millage rate, the forty-one mills, not the forty-seven. And so if you remember, when we had our finance training not too long ago, Mr. Beersley was showing that we were gonna be less, that last state, state foundation funding, that they weren't gonna send it to us because we were collecting. And so we did digging, we realized, no, we should be receiving that money. And so today, just, we just got in today, we've got our last foundation funding payment, plus the state has also reimbursed us nine hundred twenty-two thousand dollars to true-up to give us to the ninety-eight percent collection rate, which we were not at. So it took us about two weeks to figure it out, but we knew something was wrong, and so I just wanna give praise to Jamie Reed for doing the digging and making sure that we had that. Of course, we called Ray at Per Security and other places, and I just wanna say, I'm proud and I'm so thankful, because that was a huge, that makes a huge difference for us. So now, instead of having to owe one point two million dollars because they thought we collected too much, we actually gained one point five million dollars of our tax collections. So it was a huge positive when it comes down to that local revenue collection rate. The next, I do wanna bring your attention to the next link where it says, the board report for current period, that's just normal, that's what you'll see. But the next one, where you see the board report for all funds from the beginning to current. Last month, when we talked about repairing the roof for the warehouse, I said that we could pay for it out of five thousand, because we have that in capital outlay, but we would rather use a different pot of money, and that's the money that's twenty, it's twenty twenty-three. So if you look on your board report, you'll see in twenty twenty-three, we have seven hundred and five thousand dollars, and that's money that we proceed through insurance payments, like when we claim things on insurance. And so since we've been able to claim things on insurance and then reverse that, we're gonna use this money to pay for the roof, out of account twenty twenty-three, so you'll see that. The next, the next link is the bank rep. Obviously, we are still at a zero variance, very proud of that, continue to keep up with that. And then you have our check register. Under the building projects, you'll see a bond three thousand one, that's what we report in our e-finance, and it matches what we say has actually been on the next bond proceeds register as well. Our total project cost so far has been paid out at twenty-eight million, two hundred eighty-four thousand, five hundred, or three hundred fifty-nine dollars. I just wanna say, I'm so proud that we were able to find that and work hard, and so that is the best, probably my favorite financial report that I've given this year.
And we thank you for that, and thank you, Jamie, for your due diligence. I think that's, that's so critical, as all of us as board members learn more about finances and how taxes are collected and distributed, this is very, very important, you know, that we have a team working together that's, you know, that's paying attention to those details, you know, for our district. All right, any other questions, comments, concerns, before I entertain a motion to approve the financial report as presented? Can I get a motion? We're moving to the private section, we approve the financial report as presented by Superintendent Barbour. Ready for question? Any questions, comments, concerns? Hear none, all in favor say aye. Aye for me, all opposed say no. The aye said, thank you very much. All right, now we're gonna move into board committee reports. Director Evans is not here, so I'll kind of fill in her spot, as we talked about, and her committee is?
Student Affairs and Policy.
Student Affairs and Policy. We went over some very important policies based on changes in the state legislature as related to public comment, board elections, and the bill-to-bill, no sale policy. As it relates to public comments, we've had extensive conversations about that, and as we, as a board, tried to come up with a policy for public comments, as well as a procedure. Now, one of our overriding goals is to number one, first follow the law, but also to do what we can to allow the public to speak, but also to maintain the decorum that we have as a board. You know, people have an opportunity to speak, they have an opportunity to express their feelings as relates to, you know, what we do and how the district is going, but we've been mindful and very careful that we have procedures in place, you know, to kind of protect the integrity of what we're doing, basically. We don't, we don't want it to digress into something that becomes, you know, toxic in nature. We don't want to have an opportunity where individuals feel like that, you know, that their comments are not, that their comments can be used to divide the board or to cause confusion within the community. So we've been working on that, we have a, a public policy comment procedures tonight that we'll definitely review, and we're talking about that in length, and making sure that, you know, it followed the law, but also gave those community members who wanted an opportunity to speak, you know, to basically do that. We also be working on, because we really wanna, because this is a new policy, or a modified policy, we wanna be the model for this policy throughout the state of Arkansas. So when our community members speak, they speak, we maintain the decorum, and then we show other districts how they can develop similar policies so they can continue to operate in good stead. All right, board elections, we talked specifically about board elections and how many of us, these seats will become open. I'm not going to go into all the details about that, we'll discuss that at that time, and we talked about that, and trying to decide whether or not, you know, board members were served for four years or six years, that's still ongoing conversation, and we'll have a discussion about that tonight. But basically, because the law has changed in terms of how those schedules will happen, it's very, very important, because I think Director Lock, if you brought up, just wanted to make sure that we know what the timelines are. It's important, when you establish timelines for the elections, you know, you gotta get your signatures, you have to, you know, making sure that we're mindful of that, the community members know that as well, so those deadlines are not missing, those people who are interested and serving. Then we also talked about the bill-to-bill, no sale policy, we talked a link about that. Of course, we get a practice, Superintendent Barbour probably can talk to you about that, doing a superintendent report, and what we need to do to kind of support that policy going forward, to make sure, again, we follow the level of the law, but also, you know, making sure we have that flexibility so we can continue to serve and do what we do best, which is support student success. So those are my comments about student affairs and public policy. From the executive side, we've just been training. We continue to train, promoting the training, continue to do that, we're talking, you know, we're growing together as a group, you know, working on our communication, and I think that's what's gonna be key. All right. What's that next committee report? Director Whitmore, do you have any reports? Not just time? Director Lock? Not just time? All right. Director Coe?
Good evening.
Good evening.
And I guess I'm over facilities, and my report right now is normal, as we've done every other month. But I would like to tell you all that we are making progress on the track, I think they've got the track pulled up and removed, so moving on that. And we're now getting quotes for the lights, for the track field, and then last but not least, we'll have Sean give us the progress on the high school.
We appreciate the opportunity to come, as always. Dr. Rice mentioned earlier the heat wave that we have, which we love, we'll take heat over rain any day on construction, but we just started a little earlier in the morning, that's all right. We hit a couple of big milestones this month. By the end of June, we will have slabs poured for all of the buildings, so that'll be a big milestone to hit for June. We also rolled one year. We started June tenth, was the first day we had subs on site a year ago, so that was an exciting time. We had a few of the board members and administrators come out, had a little cookout for subs, just to kind of celebrate them, appreciate all that they're doing for us and helping get the building going, so we certainly enjoyed that and appreciate all the hard work from a lot of, a lot of folks all around the community. We will get us started here. So as you can see, the auditorium is really beginning to take shape. We've got almost all the steel up, the roof will start going on pretty soon. With this building, you see the formation, this is the beginning of the month, this is where the arena will be. Where all that yellow is, we were, we've already poured in, so you're starting to see kind of the last building tape shape, as we talked about. You'll also see the walls kind of starting to come up right here for the side of the classrooms. This is over the main education room, we've got concrete poured for the second floor in this corridor right here, you can see metal decking down, they're getting ready to start laying walls for the second floor, and we'll start these pores, that pore's actually already been completed, and we're starting to work across. You'll see that a little later in the video. Coming up here, you can see that this will be the cafeteria, steel is already up and in place, and we're actually starting to get a few more roofs on, back around to the safe room. This is coming into the, from the courtyard into the media center, again, that big two-story volume, all that's gonna have a lot of glass, and will be very open, be a very airy feeling, be a great place for student learning. As we're coming around here, you can start to see the second floor is starting to come up, this is actually the second floor building walls coming up, you can see that we've got decking now for almost the entire classroom wing, and we're working across pores for the school right, or for the second floor right now. As we come on around, you can also see the cafeteria is getting a roof, it's, the roof on that is now complete, they were about three-fourths of the way finished when this video was taken. You can also start to see some of the steel going up over here for the arena, kind of right there, which is on the screen. As you can see, these guys have got the inside of the roof laid, and just about finished up with the north side there. So our goal will be to have all the buildings in the drive by September, so we'll have every second floor on, everything completed, looking to have all our final roofs about to be. As you swing around here, you'll see these things that look like big concrete bunkers, those are actually called dead men, we use those during the erection process, they're sitting out here on this side, and what they do is stabilize the building while we're racking the steel and getting everything tied together. Those are about the size of a big lawn mower, riding lawn mower or a four-wheeler, but they're solid blocks of concrete. So here, you can see the track has been stripped, and we are preparing to put the ceiling coats down and then start the rework of the track, so that work is ongoing. We've got a few more weeks to go through that, we are anticipating completion out in July, and definitely have everything reopened by the end of July for the track, so we're excited to get that work started as well, and back open for the community.
End of July.
Board, any questions? We certainly appreciate it, we are finalizing, waiting on just the state's comments to come back on the high school stadium project as well, they should, they're due in any day from then, and that will allow that process to start moving forward, and we're looking to have a full update from the board at the July meeting. We certainly appreciate it.
All right, thank you very much. One last piece for finance, we're all members of finance, we did meet to learn much more about the village, we also did. We also made PBC to make sure we have a cordial relationship and continue to work together to do what we can to support teachers and staff. And so, that's really the report that we have from finance. You know, again, we've been training, 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 and learning, learning, learning. And so, it's, you know, it is, it is a task, and we're up for it. So, that's the report that we have from finance. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Okay. Alright, if none, then we're gonna move on to PBC? No updates tonight, no questions? Okay, thank you very much. Alright, then we go move on to Superintendent Barbara, your report?
Awesome. Thank you, Board. So first on, and as a reminder, I'll report from the six systems every time. And so, we'll all, we'll talk about academics, of course. By law, we're supposed to provide academic data each month, but I want to share this piece of data because it's one that is specifically tied to the targets that are placed in my contract as far as the end-of-year literacy data. So would you, would you bring that up for us? Ms. Rawls put this together for us, because we've showed you beginning year, middle year, and end of year. And so, the exciting, just pause for us right there, because this first chart is just the letter naming. And the growth that we've seen in letter naming throughout this school year for kindergarten. We have still eighty-four percent of our kindergarten students know all of their letters, uppercase letters. If you look in first and second grade, we have ninety-four percent and ninety-nine percent knowing all of their uppercase letters with a ninety-five percent tested rate. So some has fluctuated just a little bit on that testing rate at the end of the year. If you scroll up, the second chart is our lowercase letters. Again, still a very positive trend. And so, those students that are in the need of support in each of those categories, kindergarten, first and second grade, they've been identified, some are already now receiving services in our dyslexia classrooms, or just specific interventions, or some have also been identified in our classes with a special needs teacher. So we can actually pinpoint each one of those students, we're proud of that. And then, if you scroll down to the very last one, this is our letter sounds. And so, every, like right now, end-of-year kindergartners, we've grown from five percent of our kindergartners starting school not knowing, five percent knowing their sounds, to seventy-eight percent knowing all of their sounds. So I'll say this about the data, it's really positive and we're excited about it, but now it's pushed us further, because what we know is, what we're gonna start reporting on now is actually decoding and blending those sounds as to how many of our kindergartners are actually reading, how many first graders are reading, and how many second graders are reading. So I want you to look for that data coming up next school year. I think we're, we wanted to focus on this because it was something that we were very much concerned about when we first started our move to pushing students in phonics. And so now, I feel like we're at a really great place to now start pushing even further, because we want to be readers. And so, this is, this is some, just very small data that we'll add into the rest of the data that we'll report on. Any questions about just the K-2 data from the board?
Yeah, in the, the first column, reading?
Yes, sir.
For our letter sounds, what's the read?
So, when they, that was like where they started the year before, so kindergarten, so those kindergarten students coming in, they were pre-K. So when they were pre-K, it looked as if maybe nine percent knew their sounds, and that had dropped just a little bit. So what you see in first grade, when they came to first grade, eighty-two percent knew their sounds, but when they tested in the beginning of first grade, or they were kindergartners, leaving kindergarten, and when they tested in first grade, there was almost sixty-two percent knowing their letter sounds. However, it wasn't, it was a grade band, a cohort ratio, it's not an exact student-to-student ratio, but it was also something that we realized, we talked about what learning loss causes, because we did have that gap. So those students left kindergarten at eighty-two percent knowing, and then came back in first grade at sixty-two percent knowing. So we kept, we gained that gap back, if that makes sense, throughout the year. So what you see for the eight percent, those students, when they were in first grade, they might have been at eighty-seven percent, and when they started second grade, they were at eight percent. So it might have been a loss, but it's not an exact student-to-student match, because some students might have moved in or moved out as well. Any question? Anything else for that? Okay, Mr. Sims, would you go to the next link? So, we're gonna, this is our dyslexia data, and I just wanted to bring this to your attention, because this is something we were, really had a big focus this year, to make sure we were serving all of our students. And just so you know, in last school year, and this is a piece of data that we have to report out as well for the July cycle report, but last, the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, we served three-hundred-and-forty-six students for dyslexia services. So they all get, that means each one of those students were receiving either take flight, build, or Barton. It was depending on what program they were in, but they, each one were receiving this. So if you notice, the actual number of students that had qualities were three-hundred-and-seventy-two. And so you may ask, why did we only serve three-hundred-and-forty-six of the three-seventy-two? Well, those three-seventy-two were identified, and then after certain interventions, some of them didn't really have to, didn't have the strong need for dyslexia interventions. They just needed to be, have intervention and progress monitored. And so they actually tested out, so they didn't serve the whole year, if that makes sense. It's broken down by building, but that's the district area that I'm just gonna share. Any questions about those services? Thank you, Mr. Sims. Next, when we speak about district operations and fiscal governance, what you'll see, if you will click on that first link, this is policy, not that one, go back to the other one, Mr. Sims. Policy one point one four. Oh, well. Goodness, I can fix that best. I don't know why I didn't pull it there, but that's okay. Policy one point one four is our policy that we discussed as far as the public, the meeting agenda. And in the meeting agenda, the updates that were made were how we were gonna go with public comment. And so, public comment according to the new act that we talked about at our last board, at our last board meeting. So, each, anybody who wants to sign up for public comment, what we decided, what we can, I'm asking to recommend, and I'm recommending to you tonight for the Cylon, forgive me, goodness, is that the public comment period would be, we would give a thirty-minute period for people to sign up. So if our board meeting starts at six-thirty, then we will put out a signup sheet at six o'clock, and from six to six-thirty, anyone can sign up for public comment. According to law, anyone that lives in the district, as a resident of the district, as a student that attends the district, or a staff member of the district can sign up for public comment. Once that thirty, once six-thirty hits, then it will begin our actual public comment time. And according to this policy, which is law, the person who signs up for public comment will have three minutes to speak. So that was what, it's required that they get at least three minutes. And we are required to have at least a thirty-minute public comment time. So ultimately, ten people could speak for three minutes. And so that would be, so after the thirty minutes of public comment is up, then we would move on to our regularly, regular board meeting. This is also, also, public comment can be done at any board meeting, not just regular. It can be special call, any board meeting, we have to offer the opportunity for public comment. So that's the policy. It didn't change, we already had it in policy that anyone who wants to be on the agenda to speak to the board, they can also be afforded an opportunity to be on the agenda. And so it wouldn't be like a public comment speaking, they would be on the agenda and have an opportunity just like we would with PC or a speaker. And so, we still afford that opportunity as well, where they could submit in writing to the superintendent what they would like to speak to the board about, and then, and then we would place that on the, we would review that and place that on the agenda as well. So there's still basically two opportunities to have public comment. The next link that Mr. Sims is gonna click on is the one that Mr., or that Dr. Rice was referencing as far as just a procedure. And so this is how our procedure will go about. We'll place this on our website so that people, everyone understands how the public comment procedure will go. When, when they are recognized and it's time to speak, they will, the person that is on the signup sheet will state their name, whether they're a resident of the district, a parent or guardian of a current student, and/or a current staff member. They'll state their physical address and the topic that they would wish to address to the board, and they may have that opportunity to speak. It was discussed that we would use a timer on, like, you know, an internet-type timer that we could place up there. However, I would still like to talk to the board about possibly ordering another timer in case the internet's not working, and we wanted to make sure we have a timer set up for someone like that. So, just so that we can be very clear for anyone. So those are policies as far as district operations and fiscal governance. Any questions about those two things, Board? Okay.
So, I just wanted to give some clarification. So basically, no review for public comment signing?
Same.
Public comment signing? Uh, but there is a review being placed on, yeah? Okay, roughly two people. So let's say that twelve people passed their vote, and those people go for the next board?
They can come back for the next board.
For the next board, okay.
That's a great question. Anyone else? Okay. The next, under district operations and fiscal governance, I'm just bringing your attention. We already have a policy, our procurement policy states that when I bring a request to purchase to the board, it's based on the state bidding threshold. And they have raised the state bidding threshold. Right now, it's twenty, until July one, it's twenty-five thousand seven hundred, but after July one, it will be twenty-six thousand five hundred. And so I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware of that as well. And then also, under my report, we have two students request board-to-board transfer to Star City. And again, you guys gave me the authority to approve that. And so, I just, but I'm supposed to report it to you. And these were students that already lived in that area, but missed the school choice deadline. And so they didn't realize they had a choice, because they'd already been going to Star City. Next, under my section, facilities and transportation, we have the public infrastructure update, the track. Mr. Sean Carroll gave you the update on that. Next, I have a specific presentation that, I have two gentlemen here that is gonna give a presentation about our transportation department, because if you notice under purchasing, we're going, I'm requesting some purchases for our transportation department, and I want them to be able to give the information on that. But first, I'd like to say, one of the things that we discovered when we were looking at our finance training the other night was, you know, districts that are close to our size in student population. And one of the, one of the pieces of data that was on there was the square footage of the area that that district covers. And of the top, I think it was ten districts that were about our size in student population all across the state of Arkansas. We were the number one, the highest square footage, or square miles, I'm sorry, square miles for the transportation department to cover. So our transport, our district itself is five-hundred-and-ninety-six square miles, and I think that's important to talk about when we speak about transportation. So I'd like to invite up our transportation director, Mr. Davis, and his assistant, Mr. Hurt.
Good evening, how are you doing today?
Good evening.
Well, we're just gonna give you just an update of the things that were going over, and the new changes that we brought to the transportation queue. And so, when we first got here, transportation really had a system on like the routing. So buses would kind of cross each other, they're kind of everywhere. And when we first got here, we kind of had to just go to the various places. But we were able to purchase a trans van in the middle of the year, which helped with the routing and the time on picking up students. And I'm gonna click this link, go to trans van. And we're just gonna try to give you an update and show you how trans van works, and how it's used, and how helpful it is to us. I'm gonna hand it over to Mr. Hurt, he does our routing, and he's, actually, he's great at it. And he's gonna give you a overview of everything and how it works. Alright, everybody do. We're in the record. We're signing, we're pulling. So I'm just gonna first pull up all of the routes so we guys can see. As Superintendent Barbara was saying, the square footage, it'll be covered. Just we can see on an actual map versus talking. So we currently have ninety trips that are listed. So all of these blue dots are two. I'm gonna take them now. So every color that has numbers are bus routes that we cover. We go out as far as two-seventy in the White Hall area here. Here is all-timer in the Wazaseka area. This green route is out in the Tamo toward the Lincoln County area. And we have another green route that goes out Highway sixty-three toward the county highway. As Mr. Davis said, when we got here, we could not track what student goes on the bus. This software allows us to assign every student that signs up for a bus to a trip. So for the upcoming school year, we made a QR code for bus registration. Where we had posted on the district's website and Facebook page for parents deciding students are for busing. Currently... We have a hundred and seventy-one students that are assigned. So with these routes up here, each one of these numbers here are stops. This is the area that the stop was covered. So, at any given time, if a student moves into the area and they're registered in the district, through each school, it will transmit over and automatically place the student on a bus. And we don't have to go through and manually replace them. If you look right here, these dots that are colored, these are students that are already assigned to busing based off of the bus registration form that we got from the parent, and we've already assigned them to trips. The good part that I like about this is we are able to run reports. So at the beginning of the school year, we could send each school a direct list of all the students that ride a bus, what bus they're assigned to.
It also generates a parent letter that we send to the parents that says, this is your student, they ride this bus, this is the pickup time in the morning, this is the delivery time when they'll be home in the afternoon. It's very specific for parents that way, too, for your parent family. Probably because they have students they're on.
Yeah, yeah. This is gonna live site for us. This, it helps us out a lot with figuring out the students' names, wherever to type the student's name in. If we have a parent that calls and wanting the busing information, we can type the student's name in, and it'll give us the direct bus and stop location. So also with this system, we are able to get a GPS on buses. The GPS on the buses actually tells us where the bus is on, how long they've been sitting, how long they've been idling, and it...
how long they've been idling, and it also gives us an update if it's been able to stop more longer than five minutes, and it also gives us an update at the end of every trip of how much gas we save, how much gas that we're gonna need, and how much we're saving every day. So this has been great for Transportation because it kind of gives us an idea, you know, in the area that we need to work on. And it also, you know, when parents concern us when they call in and the bus might be a little late because the bus had an accident or some type of problem going on with the buses, we can actually look up and tell them, hey, that bus is around the corner, it's probably five or two, five or ten minutes away from you. And it also lets us know the driver's speed, how fast he going, is his seatbelt on, it just, it just, it's great, it's a process. And we love it because I know probably it's safety for our children. So it is great to keep your eye on the driver, it keeps us truthful, you know, so we love it. And we just honor and thankful that we were able to get this system, because like I said, when we got here, we're kind of behind, like, ten years behind, and we took it on paper and took the house over here and Mama's house over here, and it was kind of just everywhere. So, but it was great getting a system and it kind of organized and seeing when we need to boost them in our areas. But that's kind of, that's kind of neat, that's kind of.
Any questions about Trans Finder?
Yeah, go ahead.
So those, those dots that you were showing us with the numbers in there, do the numbers, does that represent a stop, or does that represent a student's stop?
The numbers represent a stop. So in the, here, let me take all of them. So this is a specific route that picks up kindergarten students on. So the bus route will actually go in the order of the numbers. So it'll go around that way. There are a couple of students already assigned, but we will, and we'll have last-minute parents to sign them up. And it'll be a lot easier for us to go in and do a mass assign versus a, every day we do one at a time, which would be good for us.
So when you are looking at this route in particular, is there, how do you know at what point that bus is full? Like, how do you know how many students are on the bus?
So if you look right here, it says that there are twenty-one students assigned to the bus, I don't know if you can see it, I don't know if I can make it bigger. But currently, there are twenty-one students assigned to this bus, and this bus is a seventy-one passenger. We would never put seventy kids on a seventy-one passenger. We try to keep it between forty and fifty students.
And it kind of gives a layout of the, the, the kind of, the whole route and how long that route should be and how many stops. So we actually have a printout paper that we can actually give to the drivers before the school year starts and give them an idea of who's supposed to be riding their buses, the stops. Uh, like, we can, when parents call in and they want to give, like, put a little, you can put little reminders and things on where you need to put them up at, or what side, um, you know, it just kind of gives a driver a layout of what he's looking at versus just wondering where to pick up the child at. So, you know, it's great.
The good part that I do like about this is we do have a lot of older drivers. And I can go in and edit the route sheet, it may say turn left on Second Street, but I can also put it parentheses by the green house or a landmark or something, so they'll know exactly where to turn, because some of our streets don't have actual signs, so that does help. I also can take a screenshot of this from the computer to kind of give them this map, because on the route sheet, it's really bunched up together, but I can kind of blow it up so they can actually see the streets when they're using it, if they don't like the actual word route sheet, we can have the actual map as well.
I have a question, this is my, so, do you see that in real time? Do you see those dots moving?
Now, we can't see the dots moving in real time from Trans Finder, but from the actual GPS.
Okay. And also, are parents able to know if they have a child on a specific bus, are they able to see where that bus is at a specific time?
Now, they're not, they're not able to see where the bus is at a specific time, but we are.
I clicked the link to the GPS on the second one of you, I don't know if it'll show anything, but it is there. Close that. See where it says GPS.
The GPS works very well, Mr. Davis watches it from sunup to sundown. So we are, we are aware where drivers are in case, and we do have times when we have parents that call and say, hey, the bus didn't come by, well, the bus came early, and we are able to see in real time what time the bus actually made that stop. So there are times when we can see where the bus is still in the neighborhood and we'll call them on the radio and have them to go back.
Yes.
And that's the good thing that I do like about it. Good question. So for sub-drivers, um, the route sheets really do play a big part in it for the sub-drivers, um, because they don't drive the routes every day. And me being new to Pavlov, I didn't know where the streets were at first, I had to use Google on my phone. So with us actually having the route sheet that gives turn-by-turn directions, it really did help a lot. I actually looked at it today, we have a bus that's at the shopping van bearing, and I actually saw this riding. So it does give us a big distance on what the buses are, we have another one that was in Conway that I saw as well, so.
Now, do you do that also track extra curriculum?
We do.
So, yeah, so I'm coming and looking, I see a Pavlovic student, this is a bus, you know, around.
And I'll say, well, Mr. Davis is pulling that up, another thing that we're looking at, Board, is there's a availability with this program that we can get iPads, like, that actually has the GPS, the tablet is what it is, it's not iPad, but it's a tablet that's like loaded in their bus that shows their route that way as well, like you would get maps on your car. We can do that with a bus now, so that would help with our sub-drivers as well. So we're looking, there's a, there's an opportunity to use some of the safety grant money to purchase those, so we're still trying to write the grant for that for the state to pay for it. We just got it this year. At the middle of the year this year.
As you can see, this is our GPS, this is one of our buses, this is bus one hundred, one hundred. It has been on the light, uh, it's currently in the parking lot, and it shows the last time it's been moving was five, twelve PM today, and probably because they're gassing them up. And you can just see, it just gives an overview of the, of the bus. You see where it has the engine hours, and you know how much fuel it has, the battery usage, and it just gives us an overall, if something wrong, if something's wrong with the bus and something happens while the bus is on the route, it actually will tell us, it'll show us, hey, this bus filters for, or the tire has been blown out, the engine is not working properly, it's overheating, and they need to pull this bus over, and actually sends us an alert while we're in the office, and we're able to call the driver if they're not, you know, don't, don't really know what's going on without, we actually can tell them, hey, pull over and shut the bus off, and we're gonna bring a double team. I'm gonna show you bus, bus, I'm gonna show you bus one-on-one. This bus is currently in the shop, as you can see, it is in Conway, and actually, that GPS is still on, and we know our bus is still at the shop, and we know when they move it, we know when they take it somewhere else. So I, I, I just love that this is.
When I get scared, I protect him, that's the best.
When I get in every day and on my phone, on work, I can call him, I say, hey, why this bus over here, or why are we moving it? I just love logging in.
He does, every day.
And the next link that you had, Mr. Davis, was the link for the fleet. Oh, you got one more thing? Go ahead.
So this is a bus that I actually drove today, um, driving one of the routes for the upcoming school year. You can see that blue route is everywhere I went. We are able to actually play it back, if you get that playback. Right there. So, that's the bus.
We going fast.
We're going that fast. We can't, we can't pull the speeders. But it just gives you a quick overview of what the actual route the bus has taken.
This, I want you to update the Board about our fleet and just the things that we're on your notes right here.
Okay. Uh, so this year, we actually transported twenty-two hundred students that rode buses and transported to school. Uh, we currently have three hundred and fifteen students now in row for next year to ride the bus. Uh, we have seven vacant routes that we have open that we're, you know, putting out there to let people know, you know, to apply, and we're trying to keep the route filled. If we, if we get them filled in time, we can go, uh, with the route that you already had set up. If not, with the Transportation System, we can actually combine routes, you know, if the driver's out or sick or something, and we have to do something last minute, we actually can add a route together, you know, to give that route covered. We, uh, we did not have to add any, go to moving route, but we did have to add some to our, our spare routes. Uh, we had an extra key, you know, come, you know, they had, especially, they needed the transportation, so we did have to do a check with our spare route and do a little adjustment. Especially, uh, especially for, we currently, uh, we're gonna need some extra buses because we have more key that has special needs. Uh, we only really have three working buses, and we provide transportation city gaps, so we're gonna, in the future, you know, we're gonna need some more special, uh, needed buses, you know, to spread the conflict, you know, for our students. Uh, we currently have two new buses that we use for future buses and outlet buses. So we use those buses, so we have, you know, like activities outside of the route, you know, we send those buses out to go on different trips and things. Uh, we currently also are using other buses, they're spare buses, so when one of our buses break down, uh, it actually, we have to use one of our buses. So, you know, that, you know, the shortage of buses that we have, you know, we might, you know, be a little behind with getting some of the, the future buses out in time, you know, so we just have to accommodate, you know, make it work right now to get the rest of the buses. And also, like you, uh, see here, right now, we have at least four to five buses to transport, uh, students to our, like, specifically during our next season. Uh, so right now, it tells you we have two buses that we currently use right now, so when another bus, two more buses, two or three more buses are done with routes, uh, they have to hurry up, you know, cut in so we can get those other activities and other students out to those future trips and games and things of that nature. Right now, we took the next week, we're using every bus we have, we're using, we have really no spare right now. So right now, we just, you know, making work of what we have, you know, we really, when a bus tears down, tears down, or, you know, something happens, we just have to hurry up and try to do what's best to get that bus back up and rolling because we don't have any spare, and, you know, we can't afford for it to ever be down, you know, in the long. We currently have twenty-seven routes, that's how many routes that we have today, uh, right now, and we'll have for next year, you know, for our district, so AM and P D route, we have twenty-seven. Like I said, about, you know, any, uh, any additional buses will help, you know, anything will help right now, just to make sure that we have enough buses to transport our students and it make it a little more comfortable for our coaches and, you know, our extra trips and things that are next at the end of the, you know, it would help because we have some extra buses, you know, just kind of accommodate, you know, sure we have more on. But that's kind of, you know, a little bit of a whole field of everything, transportation. And right here, this just a list of all our district vehicles, uh, as you see right here, we really don't have any district vehicle that's under a hundred thousand, you know, and these are just a list of all of the yearparks, the beans, and how many miles, you know, they have, uh, you see, as you see highlighted, the ones that are out serving that are not working due to, and we also have, you know, uh, which department is in drive, those vehicles, so keep an update there for that. And right here. This is kind of a take of all of the buses that we have, and, you know, in yearparks, and, you know, the ones that are out serving due to, can't be used, and the mileage, and then the next, and, you know, it's just a overview of our fleet that we have.
And I included another packet so I can see as well, it's just not good, but, yeah.
Do y'all have any questions?
How many buses do you have now?
Uh, currently, right now, we have twenty-nine buses.
What's your idea number?
My idea number thirty-five. There'll be enough buses if something happens, uh, we have to keep students out and get drivers out, already on their way to trips, we still have enough buses here, so in case a bus breaks down or something, we have the buses to walk out.
So, and I'll say, just even in the meeting, the, thirty-five is not deal, however, we have, what they said is twenty-seven routes, but we don't have the twenty-seven buses to run those twenty-seven routes. We have to do a double of route on two of those for sure. And so in, in our routes with special needs, we double up, I think we need six total, and we only have three buses for our special needs students right now that are, that are actively working. So even though these things are extra, what happens is, is the trip buses that we need that are newer, because they go further, we're having to use those as route buses right now because we don't have enough buses for our routes. And that'll be, it's under the purchases, and we'll talk about how we're gonna fund that, yes?
Okay, my question is, self-driving buses, you're not trying to get in.
I'm just saying. Feel discounted. No, good job.
One more thing in for their report, Mr. Hurd, I wanted you to just discuss about our CDL training. How many are you currently training for our CDL?
Okay, right now, we currently have six drivers training.
Yeah, so that'd be six more bus drivers.
Um, throughout the year, we've probably had about ten, and maybe half of those have actually went through the whole process and completed and they got their CDL. Um, we are the only site in Jefferson County that can legally train school bus drivers.
Yep.
Um, we're working to get the testing site set up at our bus garage, it's something that we're actively, we're, we're working on that right now to get it painted. Um, and that would help us out a lot, because then we could give the CDL test directly here versus having to take them.
I have a question, you see you're training six, six people now?
Yes.
After, after you give them the training, are they obligated to work for us, or they?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We, we don't take anybody that don't want to work for us.
Okay, okay, so there is some language that says, you know, if we train you, get your license, and allow you to use a bus to train, to pass your license, that you're obligated to work for the public school.
Yes, yes, you have to, if, if you don't have anything coming in to do, if we train you, you know, we've had that in the past, and I've heard other district, people just come in just to get a CDL for free and leave, but we also have it where, you know, we make them sign, you know, documentation state that if we help you get your license, and you at least have to be a year with us, you know, before you can leave, you know, once we give you that license.
And, and one other thing, and I don't know, I think we talked about this years ago, about, you know, even our, and I don't know if the rules are, well, I guess you have to be, you have to be over eighteen to drive, drive a bus, correct? What's the minimum age?
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
And, and if we had those students that were eighteen and older that are interested in getting into the CDL arena, how will we kind of coordinate that in terms of, you know, say they're a senior and they're about to graduate, or they say they're... In terms of, you know, say they're a senior and they're about to graduate, or they say they're, you know, interested in, in getting into, not only driving a bus, but maybe a degree and that kind of thing. How do we, how do we support that? Because I don't think that's one of the things we do with our CTE.
So currently, uh, we've got with the HR department, and when they go out to like, uh, job fairs and things of that nature, we give them a list, you know, that, you know, for college students or maybe, you know, people that's kind of come out and wanna get their foot in the door, you know, we kind of give them information of where they can start and get some information on how to get started and get their CDL and, you know, give them contact number where they can reach out to us and we can provide them with the stuff they need, you know, to get started.
Yes, sir, sorry, let's cut you off, because I know there were, a couple of years ago, there were several U N B students that were interested in getting their license too. They were on campus, but then, you know, Friday nights, Saturday nights, and even in the daytime, they would be available to
Yes.
help you drive those routes and stuff, so, you know, just make sure we.
And the positive, positive thing about that, they also start contributing teacher time, I think, that would be, you know, as a college student.
I've talked to a couple here recently.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, yes. Um, under human capital, I just wanna sell today, to talk to you, today, we're gonna have some updates to the salary schedules. And, uh, just to explain that, we, we were really trying to organize the salary schedules to, so that there wasn't so many different ranges and so that we could make sure that we were organized with that. Um, we had some salary schedule updates, uh, for the classified salary in May because we've updated the nurses' salary schedule, and I told you, we were still working on the bookkeeper slash secretary, so we've added those. And we've made some adjustments, like we took off some of the stipends off the, um, additional duty because it was just part of that role and that job, and it was figured into their salaries. So we, so some salary, uh, ranges, you'll see a, a slight increase to that, it's because of the schedule removed the stipend as well, so. Um, we're still in the hiring process, as you see in your personal action chart, this is a, was hot off the press, I updated it again, um, right before the meeting, so we can talk about that during personnel. Um, and then we have our convocation July twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, that's Monday, that's our first, teacher's first day back. All staff will be back on July twenty-first, um, and so of course, I, I'd invite the board to be a part of that day, if you wanna come that morning. Uh, I'll give you a, a firm schedule on when that is, so you can be a part of that with us if you can celebrate. Um, as, under student support, we have, uh, handbook updates because we're starting the new school year. And in your packet, there's just this document that, uh, Mr. Samson's pulled up. So what you have in your seat, uh, I'll ask Ms. Hatley and Mr. Karlock to come up and talk about the handbook process, but what you have in your, uh, seat right now is actually last year's handbook, it does not have the updates yet. We weren't gonna print it all until we had everything ready for you, but I wanted you to see what the page numbers were and how those things would be changed. We also have it online, if you wanted to look online as a flip chart, but I wanted to make sure you had a paper copy at your seat as well.
Good afternoon. Everyone knows how this process works, works, what we do is, uh, one, one of those schools, every school site, department provides recommendations. As well as people that are on that field, you have to have parents, you have to have students, the whole range. So, uh, we end up with a document that looks just like this, we had some schools recommend that, some departments recommend that. And then from that process, it goes to a meeting, which this year, that meeting was held on June the fourth. Had one at one P M. and one at five P M. So we have those signed, and, uh, it'll be a little different this year, we also came back on June the eleventh and brought our building process and, and, uh, back to the meeting, let them review again what the changes were in handbooks. So, uh, our handbook is updated, thoroughly updated, and does a complete makeover every two years. So we did it last two years, two years prior to our handbook. So, uh, I'm gonna turn it over to my boss, my supervisor, I can call, I can give a go over, uh, the handles and handbook changes that we've had.
Boss. She's trained me on how to present, so. Okay, so, a lot of the changes that you'll see, uh, before you, and even on the screen, a lot of them are just wording, uh, just some logistic things like, um, follow numbers, uh, person, personnel changes, um, like we see there'll be, like on page sixteen, updates to the kindergarten standard wage report card. Uh, they won't have your regular, our traditional A, B, C, D, E, A, B, C, D, A, B, C, D, uh, grading scale. Uh, it'll be based on the standards that they're supposed to learn, so we're piloting that this year with our kindergarten, uh, students. So next you'll see, um, two grades a week, that was in there, but we're adding per subject. So the teachers are reporting two grades per week per subject, and that really matters in elementary school, uh, because you have one teacher that's teaching that, that, uh, who's family, uh, subjects. Uh, so you look down, you just see some removals of wording, uh, a little bit further down, uh, you see, uh, page twenty-four, through twenty-nine, update graduation requirements, the management policy, uh, we notated the policy there. And believe it or not, on page twenty-eight, we still had the word Broadway, uh, from, uh, before we consolidated the district. Um, so, uh, there's a change on page twenty-nine, physical education and summer school, um, just some of those things have been omitted and deleted, uh, because they were unnecessary in those sections. Now, I guess some bigger changes, you go over to page seventy-six, uh, electronic devices, and we've had some extensive discussions on that. A lot of the discussions have been guided, um, by some boundaries or parameters that have been given by the state. So, um, but I guess what will be unique to us is what's gonna happen in first offense, second offense, third offense, fourth offense. I don't know if we want to have discussion about that or not, uh, but I'll, I'll breeze through it and then afterwards, if you have questions. On page seventy-seven, um, updates to section six include progressive discipline, uh, for vaping. Um, so we, we're just thinking about something that we looked around in other districts, and we wanted to see what was unique to our district and have, have some things that, um, are, um, specific that you need to what, how we need to treat that vaping in the district. Seventy-seven, we look a little bit farther, there's just removing things, uh, I guess another notable one would be, on page seventy-eight, uh, the cost for chrome book, um, if they're damaged. And, uh, he'll be happy about that, if we can alert the mic that it's crumbled. And our younger pouches, which is, um, if those are lost or damaged, there is a cost for them. That will be it on the handbook updates, so everything else will pretty much remain the same.
Good question, do parents can always get a, a hard topic, or do they, do they get the link to the handbook on the website?
They receive a handbook online, but we provide twenty to twenty-five hardback copies, school site, one question.
And do they sign a document saying that they read and understood if this was a student?
That's the back of it.
Any other questions?
It was, I would say it was suggested that we had like a hot topic session, section for the handbook of the things that were very specific with, meaning like graduation requirements, discipline, dress code, and so that's something that we were looking at putting a section, that was suggested by the principals when we had the meeting, so that was good as well. Like, is those specific things are easy for a parent to turn to? Yeah, for this, the new handbook, yeah.
I also got one thing we got, was that we al, we also have the supply list in their package for progress, so we can get that out.
And it's, um, I've got it on here. It's not pre-able, we're just gonna share.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Karlock, don't go anywhere. Um, one of the things that is required is that we, uh, provide, uh, an update on the yearly bullying report, like how that fits part of legislation. However we want, uh, Mr. Karlock's gonna share just our overall discipline data for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Okay, and I'll go real fast, I have a power pack, five slides, I believe, so, the discipline data and bullying report, so, um, our data speaks for itself in a lot of ways, but what we are excited about is, is that our data is trending, trending down in a lot of ways. So, right here, you see major O D R comparison, O D R is not O thirty rap, it's office discipline referral. So, um, as you can see, it's kind of backwards in my thinking, but this is our current year, the twenty-four, twenty-five is in the blue. Uh, so we can see that, um, from twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four, we see that, uh, those major office discipline referrals have printed down. Um, now the total number of office discipline referrals includes the major and the minors. Um, minors could be something as easy as throwing a sheet of paper across the floor and hitting somebody, or throwing a sheet of paper across the room and hitting someone. Uh, major would be more like fighting, or even if we get into vaping and different things like that, so some of your more serious offenses. So next, oh, I was gonna, I'm gonna click, I'm gonna click. Yeah, oh, yeah, okay, so this one is, uh, behavior by year comparison, uh, number of students, um, with one or more O D R. And you hear a lot of people say, um, twenty percent of people, well, eighty percent of the people are doing the right thing, and you may have twenty percent that you may have to work on and maybe causing those problems. Uh, we're getting closer to that twenty percent. Uh, if you notice in, uh, the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, we had about thirty-two percent. And that includes just a lot of people repeating and cycling and doing some of the same things. Uh, but that's trending down as well, uh, to where we're getting lesser, a lesser percent of students that are causing some of these, uh, O D Rs, whether they're minor or major. And I just attribute that to a lot of the systems and structures that we have in place, uh, for our student support services, capturing kids' hearts, uh, teaching and training our te, teaching and training our teachers on how to handle students, uh, from those minor offenses all the way to those major offenses. And then just using a lot of our internal resources to help support students. So this one, uh, our top major infractions, may have to spend a little time here because your eyes gotta jump, uh, but if you look from where it started, our top five twenty-two, twenty-three school year, you had insubordination, fighting, disorderly conduct, cutting class. That's not, that's just a number code, that's seventeen, but cutting class, physical attack or harm on a student. Then you look at the next year, you make, we didn't have those exact same top five, they kind of switched order. Uh, but you had fighting, insubordination, disorderly conduct, physical attack or harm on a student, and cutting class. And with a lot of those, as you look, uh, like even cutting class, and twenty-two, twenty-three, it was one ninety-seven, twenty-three, twenty-four, it was ninety-four. Uh, over here, it kind of spiked a little bit, um, but we anticipate that just continue to trend down. Now, what you see in the new twenty-four, twenty-five school year, and that's one reason we have vaping, um, we're addressing it in the handbook, is because that appeared in the top five. So, um, we don't have historical data to, uh, base anything off of, so we have to have a plan of attack going into this new year. How we can address vaping, uh, this and becoming, that's on the rise in our district with our students. Okay, top, is this the same?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, this is the same one, a different.
We used to chart first of this.
Yes, so this is just a different way to look at that same type of thing. Okay, this is number of bullying infractions by school year. Now, your eyes aren't playing tricks on you, uh, we actually had three. And what we did, and I, I just really attribute our department over here, our student services department, and our schools with having, um, student, um, student intervention teams, uh, to really look at student data and really call things as they are. Now, everybody wants to call everything bullying, but bullying has to follow certain criteria, uh, one major thing is causing hurt or harm to someone, it's repeated. Uh, those are some things that we look at, and it's not just the principal looking at that, we actually bring it, bring it to a committee, and the committee looks at all the data and the information around it, and if it doesn't meet that bullying criteria, it doesn't mean there's no consequences. It just means that it's something else and it falls under another category, so. Yeah, falls under harassment or, or something different. But, um, we've really been trying to make sure that wha, whatever data we put in, it is what we say it is. Uh, not something that we thought was that or something that could be that. So we do see, uh, we did see bullying trend way down this year.
And I think that's important because, and, and thank, thank you and your team for that work, because it just shows a change in culture.
Yeah.
You know, in terms of the environment, you know, how students feel about themselves, how they feel about other students, and so, just wanna commend you.
Yeah, yeah, and it's a team effort, I think, we've really been focusing on it. And I think this is the last one, last one, okay.
Any questions for Mr. Karlock?
Um, so, from twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-four, twenty-five, did any of the criteria or bullying change?
No, that's consistently been the same. Now, types of bullying over years have, years have changed because you got, sorry, with bullying, whether people wanna, uh, bully on the internet or Facebook. There's other modes and methods of doing it, but the way that we're identifying bullying is, is different. Um, what's changed with our district is that we don't have a sole person just trying to identify and make that determination. It's become more of a team effort, and since it's a team effort, you have more people who are trained on identifying and knowing what bullying looks like. Um, another thing with, with more people on our staff, being able to identify bullying, we can also transfer that knowledge to parents. So parents on the club are saying, this is bullying all the time, they'll tell you about an incident and let us make the determination.
Okay, thank you.
Did you wanna add to that in a second?
Yeah, yes, uh, just, the example I would use, Ms. Calhoun, would be, your son would have to report that the same kid is bu, uh, bullying him twice before he goes into that category. Other than that, the first one we logged as harassment, and that's kind of high as, as far.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Karlock. Um, the next link on there, uh, under student support is the school supply list, this is something that Ms. Hatley gathers with, uh, principals and teachers just to look at. So I will say, what you see next is, again, this school year, I'm, I'm gonna ask that you guys, that we continue to purchase the free backpacks for every student in the district, and this year, again, the free backpacks come with a small set of little school supplies. However, it doesn't come with a full set, and so this is another, if a parent would like a school supply list, this is it. Um, obviously, if students do not, cannot get the supplies or, or their parents can't afford it, we of course supplement that as well. But this would just be a school supply list that we'll put out at, uh, our local stores for parents to purchase.
I have a question about seventh, twelfth grade, the wired headphones or wired earbuds, what would they be, those for?
For, uh, testing or if they're doing individual work in their classroom. Now, we provide headphones during the atlas assessment, but this is another opportunity, but watching a video in class or something like that with their school, their school provided device. Because they're not allowed to have their own airto, AirPods. Anything else about this plus? All right, real quick, uh, under student support, I have Ms. Rose Smith here, Ms. Smith, um, would you mind talking about the backpacks and the difference? All the different places you checked and looked, you don't have to name all of them, but how many different quotes you got? I didn't put a link, I just brought the backpacks through front.
Okay.
I didn't put a link.
I, I, I see, I wasn't expecting to speak to you all tonight, thank you, Dr. Barbary.
You're welcome.
Good evening, everyone. I'm not gonna be before you long, because I know it's summer and everybody's trying to get a half-price shake from Sonic, so I don't wanna prevent you from that. So, yes, and Dr. Barbary just explained, um, for the past few years, the district has provided free backpacks to our students. Uh, we use Title IV funding, uh, part of Title IV, um, deals with providing a safe and healthy environment. And so with that is, is being said, with a clear mesh backpack, that means security personnel at and teachers can easily see what's in the students' backpacks as opposed to a traditional backpack where they're likely to bring something. And so my recommendation tonight is a company called Dollar Days, uh, we used them last year, so this is a sample that we used last year. Uh, we got some great feedback, um, during our handbook meeting. Uh, we got some great feedback, um, during our handbook meeting. And so, we had a student from the high school, she said, we appreciate you all giving us the backpack, because she said, I'm in AP classes, I have binders, I have things like that. So, yeah, we get mesh, and so, Dr. Burberry was very responsive, and she said, Rose, get on it, and I did. And so, I went around, and so, I asked, I'm, I'm a spreadsheet person, so, the school's got a spreadsheet for me with various prices and things like that. But Dollar Days was always really responsive. Um, he got to me right away. I said, hey, my boss wants mesh backpacks, because I already got the clear ones. And so, they actually sent samples from Phoenix, Arizona to us. This is a clear example, but last year I was going to bring them up there to you all. And so, if you want the clear one, this is what we provided last year. And so, like Dr. Burberry stated, there, these backpacks will come with a small supply pouch, and it's based upon gray fans. So, elementary has like crayons, glue, just those basic things, erasers. Secondary, you might have, it'll, it'll include ink pens, highlighters, and then they get it in a zipper pouch.
Will students have a choice, or they just need to either one or the other?
We're going to go, our recommendation to you all tonight is mesh, based upon the feedback. Schools, here's the thing, some of our schools still have backpacks left over from previous years. So, if a student or a parent specifies that they want a clear one, it, so then they can ask the school for a clear one instead. But our goal this year is to go based on the feedback that we received about the mesh backpacks being more durable. We want to try that this year.
So, if parents are required to have these backpacks, what do parents decide they want to buy?
The parents can bring their own, now, this is just a courtesy, because a lot of kids still, parents still, you know, kids like name brands and stuff like that, but this is just.
But it still has to be clear or mesh?
It has to be clear or mesh, with the exception of pre-K. Pre-K students can have the little My Little Pony or whatever else. But K twelve has to have a clear or mesh backpack. So, like, yes, sir, which, sir, faster? Was it black one? I think for the quote that we have, and so, I can get the quote adjusted when I speak with him tomorrow, because usually, so, last year when you guys approved it, I called him the next morning, and those backpacks were here, and we had them loaded in the bag a week later, so.
So, what you see in your, in your packet, there's a, so the neon ones are seventeen inch, and they're five seventy-five a bag. And then if you look at the black one, it says four colors, but that's the eighteen inch, and it's ten thirty-nine. And so, we could do all those four, and it, they, they wouldn't be neon, but it would be all like the black one. Yes, but there's four different colors, the same quality as the black one, at ten thirty-nine a bag.
And Dr. Burberry said the same thing when she and I met on Friday, she liked the black one. Sir. What you bring in classroom. So, that is it, that's our recommendation. It's just a courtesy that the district provides. Like we said, parents and students still have the autonomy to purchase their own backpack long as it is clear or mesh. Any other questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
I'm sorry.
Um, so, as the next section in our, uh, in my update is about stakeholder community engagement. I have, um, Ms. West, because you'll see a purchase in your, um, in your new business about, uh, new websites called Aptige. And so, I wanted Ms. West just to kind of talk about Aptige real quick.
All right, so currently, the district uses school status for the two-way messaging communications, and we use school insights for our website. But we're going to take those two platforms and go to one, which would be Aptige, which we're hoping to start in July. Uh, this will help us streamline our communications. It's going to help a lot of what the teachers are using, like classroom dojo. It has a part, a piece in there for, uh, student recognition, for behavior, where they're able to give points. It gives real-time notification to parents. So, if a student is sitting in Ms. Swinney's class and she gives them three points for good behavior, automatically Mr. Whitmore, he'll get that notification, he'll be able to see that. Uh, the teachers will have a thing called like a classroom or their room, where they're able to do like live posting, uh, today we're learning about so-and-so, so-and-so, so-and-so. There's an area for them to talk about their classroom information, uh, of course, the behavior piece in there. They would put the assignments, uh, parents are able to see that. Um, and they're also able to do that two-way communication with parents. So, they need to message the parents, the parents can receive the message in their language for the translate. So, if that student, uh, stands, automatically translate that message and it comes back to the parent, it can go two ways, and it's just between the, uh, teacher and the family. Um, what I'm liking most about it is I can do one message, I can write one message, and it's automatically going to go to the app, which we will have a mobile app. It's going to go to the website, it'll go to Instagram, it'll go to Facebook, it'll go to X, it'll be a push notification, a text message, a voice call, and an email. I can do all of that with just one message. Right now, I have to log into this, then I have to log into this, I have to do this, this, and this, and send it out. So, I'm really excited about that. They're offering us unlimited training and real-time support, and supposedly they respond within sixty seconds for, uh, supporting us, so.
I, I will say, that she did mention, but having those two different platforms, it actually costs us more to have the two different platforms than it will to have this one platform. And so, in your packet, what you're going to see is a three-year contract, but we still only have to pay it one year at a time, but we are agreeing to work with Aptige for three years, because you get it at a cheaper price that way.
West, how many people would be trying to actually send a message out? You'd be the, the sole contact person?
District-wide messaging will be just administrators and my team. Let's force within the classroom, every teacher, every message, or their families.
Thank you, Ms. West. Any questions for Ms. West?
Do you know of any other schools discussion in this?
We are the last ones to get it in this area. I looked two years ago, and I had ju- we had just signed a contract with school status, and I looked around and everybody had it but us, now, tell me about Barbary about it, but we were in a contract. And so, they've been calling me and calling, emailing, when you going to do it, when you going to do it? So, I felt like this is a good time to transfer them.
We're out of the other contract, and as a superintendent, I've, I've used Aptige before.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. West. Um, and the next thing I do want to share, um, is about partnerships. And I was going to read this, um, I was so fortunate, I got, uh, a letter was delivered to our district office from, um, the local chapter of the NAACP, and it was addressed to me and you guys, and I thought I wanted to be able to share it to you all. And, um, it said, Dear Dr. Burberry and esteemed members of Pamela School District School Board, on behalf of the NAACP Pamela Branch and its membership, I extend our heartfelt congratulations and sincere appreciation for your decision to hold the upcoming high school graduation ceremony at the University of Arkansas Pamela. This thoughtful decision places our students in an environment that not only celebrates their academic accomplishments, but also inspires them to envision higher education as a tangible next step. By hosting graduation at our city's four-year university, you are helping to plant a seed of aspiration that could influence a lifetime of opportunity. Furthermore, this initiative gives UAPB an unprecedented opportunity to connect and invest in our young people at a critical juncture in their lives. The exposure and access you have provided through this choice may shape educational and career paths in powerful, lasting ways. We commend you for your leadership and for keeping the well-being and future of our children at the forefront of your decision-making, as with gratitude and pride that we say thank you for considering our children first. With appreciation, I will with the president and the NAACP Pamela Branch.
And I'd just like to chime in and say, and I want to thank President Wood- Woodfield and the Pamela and the NAACP for that, that has been a support, because there was some conversation on social media about, you know, why the graduation was only to be UAPB, and there was some, uh, some back and forth with, with some community members. And, and just note, we, we are, we might, we're reading the comments, we might not respond. We're reading the comments, and, and again, just continue to reinforce, as this letter indicated, that it's always a beautiful thing when Zerbers Alliance collaborate together. Zerbers Alliance, so, thank you, Dr. Burberry, and thank you again to President, uh, Woodfield and the Pamela and the NAACP.
The last thing under stakeholder community engagement, um, I'm excited. What you'll see in your packet tonight is we have finally kicked off our UAPB residency partnership. If you remember, as part of our strategic plan, we have a grow your own goal. So, we're growing our own educators. And so, this school year at UAPB, they have thirteen students that are in their internship project in their educational, uh, pathway. So, we are ahead of the game in ways, because in the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, it's going to be required by the state of Arkansas that anybody with a traditional education degree has to serve a year-long residency. And so, we are working with, uh, UAPB this year to embrace these students. We won't have all thirteen, but we will have eleven if you guys approve tonight. Um, eleven of these students will be able to get their internship for their education degree in one year, as well as work as a pair professional for the Pamela School District and earn money while they're getting their last year. And so, of course, this helps them so they don't have to have a second job. They can be focused on actually teaching, and they're in the classroom and supporting our students. And the goal, of course, would be next school year that they're employees of Pamela School District. Um, of the eleven that we're receiving, I'm going to ask, uh, I'm going to recommend tonight that we hire ten of them as pair professionals throughout the district. And one of them actually, um, I'd like to ask that we hire as an actual teacher of record in our music class in the elementary as an aspiring teacher, because she has, um, passed all of her tests and everything like that, and so she can go through the aspiring teacher pathway as well. So, I wanted to share that again, and it's, it's really exciting, um, partnering with UAPB for this, as far as growing our own. And that's my report.
All right, thank you, Assistant Barbary. Any questions, concerns about the superintendent reporting from board members? All right, here now, let's go ahead and move on to the business.
The first item on your agenda for new business is to approve an extension of a three-year financial advisory agreement with First Security. And so, I have, um, Mr. Ray Beersley, our financial advisor, is here to talk to you about that.
We currently serve Pamela School District and have for many years as their fiscal agent and financial advisor. Fiscal agent is when you issue a bond, such as before the election, you handle the bond issue, and that's served that point. And then as the financial advisor, um, provide information to the district. We work with the district treasurer, the board, the superintendent providing many, many advocates of help up there. We do not charge anything for this. The only thing we charge is if and when you issue a bond, there is a scheduled attach on the right-hand side of the back, uh, that has been, rates have not changed in twenty to thirty years, been a long time. So, one of the reasons we're asking to extend it is we are looking at possibly raising our rates that we've not raised that long, so we want to lock your rate in for thirty more years, uh, at the current rate. So, we've really enjoyed serving Pamela School District, uh, and taking care of their financial needs and so forth. So, we ask that you continue our employment, we enjoy it, if y'all would like to continue further. Mr. President, I'm sorry, the board has.
In West's quarters? All right, at this time, I'd like to, uh, ask a motion to approve First Security Beersley as financial advisor for a period of three years effective as of the date of adoption. The move to private second, ready for question? If a question comes, concerns? Hear none, all in favor, say aye. Aye for me, all opposed, say no. The ayes have.
Thank you. Uh, the next item is, I'm asking for approval of an electronic fund transfer for Lewis Architects. Uh, we received an email from their, uh, business manager saying, you know, we, we mail them checks, and sometimes they're tens of thousands of dollars, up to maybe a million dollars, and they were worried about mail fraud, and so this would keep us from having to mail the check, that it would just do the electronic fund, which we've, we've approved this for other companies. We do it with our, our teacher retirement, things like that. So, we just have to have board approval to add them to the electronic fund transfer.
All right, at this time, I'd like to, um, ask for a motion to approve E F T for Lewis Architects. The move to private second, ready for question? If a question comes, concerns? Hear none, all in favor, say aye. Aye for me, all opposed, say no. The ayes have.
The next item we have are the approval of the student handbook changes that were presented to you tonight. If more changes happen, we will bring that before you as well as an addendum, but this is what we have for tonight.
All right, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six student handbook changes. The move to private second, ready for question? If a question comes, concerns? Hear none, all in favor, say aye. Aye for me, all opposed, say no. The ayes have.
The next item are the approval of policies one point one-four and four point four-seven. Remember, one point one-four was the meeting agenda policy. The recommendation came from Arkansas School Boards Association and was presented at your, uh, policy committee. Four point four-seven is the bell-to-bell no cell, so it's the electronic cellphone, or electronic devices, personal electronic device policy, and this was brought before a committee. We had ASBA suggestion, we had our bell-to-bell committee, and that came before our, uh, board committee this week as well, or last week as well.
All right, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve policies one point one-four and four point four-seven. Move to private second, ready for question? If a question comes, concerns? Hear none, all in favor, say aye. Aye for me, all opposed, say no. The ayes have.
The next item you have are the adjusted, um, salary schedules. And so, in your packet, the first tab that you see is the additional duty pay scale. What we did is we removed, um, the, an eight thousand dollar stipend, that was a security stipend. We removed a ten thousand dollar stipend, that was a part of the job duty. Um, and then, we just adjusted based on what we looked at last time. We moved up the incentive pays, where we, we pay out the special education fulfillment incentive, the retention incentive, the high needs instructional, and the C D L incentive. We just put those up at a higher section in the, I don't either, now that I look at it. It needs to have the C D L on there. Maybe it's at the top, it's a one thousand, yeah, it is, it's right there, it's, it's at the top closer. So, we made that adjustment to the additional duty pay. We didn't take, we didn't add anything, we just took two things off and moved, uh, one thing around, a few things around. The next tab that you're going to see is the district support services. And this is where we combined some of those positions and made it a little bit longer on this, so instead of having the different salary schedules. So, you have the coffee center operator that did not change, building secretary, it did not change. Secretary bookkeeper, that wasn't changed in the role, and so that's in addition to this salary schedule. Then you have, um, technology assistant, it stayed the same. The executive department level support, it stayed the same. The district communications, it was lumped in with another schedule. It's just brought out here so that we have that there. Um, accounts payable, S I S coordinator, this is a position that was stipen- had a stipend included with it, and so we, we adjusted that, so that'll have a small increase. The payroll H R coordinator, that was a, uh, person that was also not considered a, um, an executive, well, not a, I'm using the wrong word. So, with the new labor laws, unless they supervise someone, they are, they qualify for overtime if they hit a certain, if they don't have a. if they hit a certain, if they don't have a certain salary. And so our payroll person, this would make it to where the payroll coordinator would not qualify for overtime because she oversees someone, but this would make that, that a little bit of an increase for her salary as well. Then you have the business manager treasurer, that would stay the same. The next tab is just, these are all classified positions as well. The next tab with the classified salary schedules, you will see an adjustment to the child nutrition director. This person was receiving a stipend. We've included that stipend as part of the salary schedule because it is part of that job. The director of safety and security, that's included, that person was receiving a stipend or that job role was, and we've included that into the salary schedule. The next group was the same, that did not change. Those are the directors of maintenance, transportation, and grounds. The next one is the director of health services. This was one that you all loaded on already. We just added it to the salary schedule. The director of technology, that person now, well, he's always supervised other techs. And so has a supervisory role. He does not qualify for overtime, so that is his direct, that's what he would make in that salary schedule. And then the director of finance, that's all, that has not changed. Any questions about the salary schedules?
All right, here are questions. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the updated salary schedule. Move private, second, ready for question? Any questions, concerns? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye for me, all opposed say no. The ayes have.
So the next section is approval of purchases. We have our ninety-five percent curriculum. This is the professional development for that curriculum. And it's for coaching and coaching days where the professional people come onsite. And it's also for them to go in the classrooms and support that. So it is, it goes right with our curriculum and we pay for this out of Title I money. We've reduced the days. We had more days with this last year, but we've got more of our self, I'm sorry, more of our teachers trained in this. And so we do have a little bit of a reduction in days in this professional learning. But it's a hundred and nineteen thousand, six hundred dollars for twenty-three days of professional coaching from ninety-five percent group.
Where do those funds come from?
Title I.
All right, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the ninety-five percent curriculum, professional development, and coaching. The move is private, second, is there ready, ready for question? Any questions, concerns? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye for me, all opposed say no. The ayes have.
NIT is a consulting group that is already working with our lead teachers. It was approved by you guys last year on our lead, and we had grant money to pay for that. And we still have some of that grant money left over. And this is now also providing coaching and support for our building level leaders and our instructional facilitators. And with that NIT proposal, it is six onsite days, one big building walk, and then five onsite and coaching virtual days for support. And it's a thirty-three thousand dollar contract that we paid out of the state POC grant money. It's not even in our, in our, it's bonded to us.
All right, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the NIT POC leadership coaching and support. Move private, second, ready for question? Any questions, concerns? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye for me, all opposed say no. The ayes have.
The next item you see is the Aptige three-year contract. If you scroll, I'm not sure exactly, I think it's page seven. The overall payment schedule is there. And so for the three-year contract, it's ninety thousand and eighty-six dollars. The first year, which would be this school year, we do have a startup fee that's included in that first year. But after that first year, our, our, our payment would be twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six a year for Aptige. And currently, we are paying thirty-seven thousand, three hundred for the two platforms that we use. So it's a cost savings as well. So I'm asking for permission to do the three-year contract at a discounted rate, but we would pay it one year at a time. And we pay for this also at Title I communications money.
Question for board members. So our current contract is up?
Yes, sir.
That means that there is no residual, no overlap in terms of, you know, if this is approved tonight in terms of setting up the new?
That's right.
All right, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the Aptige three-year contract. Move private, second, ready for question? Any questions, concerns? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye for me, all opposed say no. The ayes have.
The next item in your packet, or these are going to come with the different types of maintenance and transportation and grounds. And so this first purchase is a purchase for a Kubota tractor. We do not currently have a tractor and we need to bush haul the different areas that we have. And so in your packet, what you see is a quote for a tractor with a cab and one without a cab. Mr. Gragg is making the recommendation that we get the tractor without the cab, but it does have the front end loader. And then we're also going to need that, the bush haul itself, the inch rotary cutter. So the total cost for that Kubota tractor is forty-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy for the package that we need. This was the lowest bid that we had. We did seek bids from other companies.
Where do those funds come from?
This will come out. Okay, so these funds, the next few that we're going to talk about are all going to come out of next year's budget and it will come out of five thousand, the capital outlay funds.
All right, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to purchase the Kubota tractor with loader and rotary cutter, a River Valley tractor. Move private, second, ready for question? Any questions, concerns?
Yes, sir, I have a question. Why we can't get a cab?
Because it costs more money.
The cab has the acquisition, right?
The one we got don't have no acquisition.
It's a nine thousand dollar car.
We were doing it for savings. Thanks, sir. Yes, sir.
Any other questions, concerns? All right, here are, all in favor say aye. All in favor say aye. Aye for me, all opposed say no. The ayes have. Thank you.
So the next item you see in your packet is a quote from Central State's Bus Sales. And this is to purchase a new twenty-twenty-six diesel-powered eighty-nine passenger bus. We reached out to other companies. This is the only company that could get us a bus this school year. It won't be like right now, but they're ready, they're ready for it. So when we reached out to the other bus companies for a new bus, we wouldn't be able to get it till this time next year because they build it and things. But Central State has a bus that they're, they're ready to, getting ready to build and ship. The total cost of the bus is quite expensive. However, it is the best value for that size of a bus. It's a hundred and seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred and sixty-three dollars. We will also use the five thousand account to pay for this at the next school year. No, not yet, not there yet. No, no, not yet. Now, I have a picture of this one. I just gave you the details. Nope, it's a road bus, not diesel.
All right, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to purchase a twenty-twenty-six three-hundred-passenger bus from Central State Bus Sales. Move private, second, ready for question? Any questions, concerns? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye for me, all opposed say no. The ayes have.
So now, what you see next, board, I want to present to you, these are used buses. So when we knew we needed to update our fleet and we knew that buses cost a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars, we knew we couldn't afford three of those. However, Mr. Davis and Mr. Hurd and Mr. Gragg have reached out and used Master, talked to Masters Corporation before. Their used bus sales, their used bus salesman. And they have a twenty-twenty Bluebird that only has sixty-five thousand miles on it for eighty-four thousand, nine hundred. They're, the next one that they have also that I want to share real quick is a two thousand nineteen thirty-passenger bus that also has wheelchair lifts and will hold six wheelchairs. And so, uh huh. And so, and it only has sixty-five thousand miles on it. I'm asking for permission to purchase these, but we haven't yet, I mean, but I want to tell you that this company is going to drive the buses down here. Since they're used, they'll drive them down to us and let us keep them and use them and practice with them first to make sure that we're satisfied with the quality. And if we are, then I'd like for permission to purchase the two used buses as well. So this would give us two full-size buses and one special needs bus for our fleet. How long, how long do we get to?
We'll get to here for two weeks.
Two weeks. Oh, the wheelchair lift, both of them are, okay, so eighty-five nine is the first one. They're both ones, no, eighty-four nine for the larger one, eighty-five nine for the wheelchair lift bus. And again, this comes out of our capital outlay. This reading has already started figuring the budget for next school year. And so we've budgeted about four hundred and fifty thousand that we can spend on our fleet.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to purchase a twenty-twenty-seventy-one passenger bus for sixty-five thousand miles, two thousand nineteen thirteen passenger special needs bus, sixty-five thousand, seventy-six miles for Masters Transportation. Move private, second, ready for question? Any questions, concerns? I have one. As we talk about our current transportation needs, are there any incentives or grants on state level? I know they've supported some stuff, you know, related to our security and safety. But are there any grants or any pockets of funds we could tap into on state level to support us with our transportation needs?
Not on the state level at this time. Now, what they have agreed to is to let us put safety things, safety features on our buses. We can use safety grant for, that's like the tablets and the GPS. We can use safety grant money, but not for purchasing a bus yet from the state level. However, Mr. Davis is exploring grant opportunities through electric buses that are available as well. And so that's something that he's applied for and that if we ever have an opportunity to do that, that we could look into that as well, that they would grant us money for electric buses and the different charging stations and things like that.
Tire is the one that's safe.
They do not. That's maintenance and operating. Question?
Any other questions, concerns? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye for me, all opposed say no. The ayes have.
The next purchase for our fleet is a purchase of a maintenance truck. This is a used truck from Everett. Again, we had three different quotes. This truck has sixteen thousand miles on it and it would be, and it's a, a two hundred and fifty, twenty-five hundred ton?
It's one ton pickup.
There you go.
We use the haul.
To haul. And this would come out of five thousand as well. And the reason for that purchase is if you looked back at our fleets for all of our trucks, the, we do not have a truck that has less than eighty thousand miles on it.
All right, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the purchase of a twenty-twenty-four GMC Sierra twenty-five hundred truck from Everett. Move private, second, ready for question? Any questions, concerns?
Yes, sir. What do you have on the truck?
Lawn mowers, trailers, whatever we need. One that we use now has two hundred and what thousand miles on it?
Two hundred and ten.
And it's not really safe to drive.
Can it pull the tractor, the Kubota?
Big part.
Wouldn't pull the tractor as well?
Yes, ma'am. You'll put it in vault, you put the tractor on the trailer and we'll pull the trailer.
Any other questions, concerns? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye for me, all opposed say no. The ayes have.
The last purchase under purchasing for tonight is the purchase for the mesh backpacks. And it's through Dollar Days. However, what we're going to do, Ms. Smith and I, because on this, you see a quote for the neon. We're not going to purchase the neon seventeen-inch. We're only going to purchase the eighteen-inch mesh backpacks at ten thirty-nine. Yes, at ten thirty-nine a bag.
All right, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to purchase the mesh backpacks at ten thirty-nine a bag from Dollar Days. The move is private, second, ready for question? Any questions, concerns? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye for me, all opposed say no. The ayes have. Thank you very much.
The last item on the agenda is personnel. I can explain the personnel. I don't, I don't necessarily need executive session unless you do, but I'd like to explain the list on there.
What's your pleasure, the board? Do you all want to go into executive session?
I don't, I don't think we need to unless, I mean, I can tell you who's on the list, what the list is about.
What's up? All right. Okay, so, so, Assistant Barbara?
So on your personnel action chart, which you'll see are the certified hires, and I'm excited to say that, well, we are hiring one, two, three, four, five, six, seven certified special educators. And then, of course, we have a special educator in the district. We opened up for the LEA director and we have not been able to find someone that has the experience that we need for the district at this time. However, we would like to, and we've spoken with Ms. Tanya Smith and she's interviewed. She's our current inclusion specialist for the district and we'd like, I'd like to hire her as our assistant LEA director with the support of the State Department and Mr. Karlog in special education to really help with that, with that process. And so for this school year, I'd like to recommend her to be our assistant LEA. The next group are actual classroom teachers. Not every one of those, there are three on there that are not fully certified, but the rest are already last-minute classroom teachers and they're filling roles that were vacant, I mean, that we have to have. It's not, it's not in addition to, it's those that have either resigned or left. And so we're filling that role with those classroom teachers. We would like to, I'd like to recommend to hire three district-level instructional facilitators. This school year, we had three. One of them, we have hired as an assistant principal, so it left us with two. And so this will give us a set of five instructional years. It was something that we, instructional facilitators is something that we knew there was a need and we can be able to pay for that out of Title I money. We have, we had a vacancy for a librarian, so this, you'll see the librarian position on here, the media specialist. And then the elementary music, that's our aspiring teacher from UAPB that we're hiring for the elementary music position. Then you have the special education pair professionals. That list, remember, I did not bring to you all a list of pair professionals. We had forty-two people that were serving as special education pair professionals. We really need to fill thirty-one of those positions. And so we haven't completely filled it all, but we, so we reduced the number of special education pair professionals. The next section are pair professionals that, again, we did not hire those back. Those are building level instructional aides and we still have not filled all those. But these are the current ones that we've interviewed and have filled those positions that will be used in various buildings across the district. The, what I talked about, the UAPB residents as pair professionals, that's the list of UAPB residents that are going to serve as pair professionals in different areas of the district based on their education, what they're getting their education degree in. And then what you see is the office staff. These are those that will have either a secretary slash bookkeeper or this building secretary. So the board knows every elementary will have a bookkeeper slash secretary and a secretary. The secondary schools will have a bookkeeper slash secretary and two secretaries, one because of the support that they need with credits and attendance and things like that. There are some district-levels office personnel as well that are at the bottom of that if they don't say secretary or bookkeeper. We are hiring the security. So these are replacing CSSOs that did not come back or a security guard that did not come back. So all those are replacements to keep our security pool. We do have a certified retirement, two of those, and then we have one classified retirement.
All right, any of that report? This time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the personnel. All right, hearing that report, this time I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the personnel report that's presented by Superintendent Barbara. Move is private. Second, ready for question? Any questions, concerns? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Aye for me, all opposed, say no. The ayes have. All right, that brings us to the end of our meeting. Before we go to the German, I just want to thank the community for coming out, the parents, the teachers, the staff. Also, I want to give a shout out to Facebook Land, Zoom Land, to those individuals out there, to continue to support the Pablo School Athletic Club. Thank you for supporting the Columbus River Water Walker. And I hope you all have a pleasant evening. At this time, I entertain a motion for a German.